Good morning, I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, July 6, 2010. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, I have three, well, two additions to the agenda, and then I want to move one item up on the agenda. First of all, we need to amend the agenda to add a resolution at the request of the ACCG for the Henry County Board of Commissioners opposing unionization and mandatory collective bargaining legislation pending in the United States Congress. And I'd like to move that item to just after the presentation of the IAATI award. Also, would like to add to that consideration of the use of county property by Luella Baptist Church, and Commissioner Holder will present that, and we'll do that directly after the ACCG resolution. And then in addition, I would like to move public comment up on the agenda to just after that as well, because we have a gentleman here signed up for public comment that probably has somewhere else where he needs to be, so we'll move that up. Additionally, under SPOS, Item B, which is a resolution requesting approval of a professional engineering services agreement for the design to repair the Flippin Road culvert over Pates Creek, that item has been tabled to a future meeting. With those changes, I would ask for a motion to accept the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Holder, and a second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries 3-0. The first item on the agenda is going to be a presentation of certificates awarded to Commissioner Stamey and former Commissioner Rick Jeffries for completing ACCG Certified Commissioners Program Becoming Certified County Commissioners. This is a series of classes that commissioners are eligible to take, and it helps them in their job performance, and both of these commissioners have had committed to taking a number of these classes. It takes a lot of time away from your family. These classes generally begin about 8:00 in the morning and end somewhere around 4:00 I will be voting on all agenda items today. or 5:00 in the afternoon. They're very intensive, and it takes a lot of commitment on their part to do that, and The next item is going to be a presentation of an award received from IAATI and presented they're certainly to be commended for taking the time to participate in a program in order to Officer Rick Franklin and Detective Mike Hardy for Investigators of the Year. to become better servants to the people. With that, I'd like to ask Commissioner Stamey if he would step over here, and we'll present And who's going to be making that presentation?
Bill Burrus, I'm the law enforcement liaison with LoJack here in Georgia.
this to him, and also, I don't know if former Commissioner Rick Jeffries is here, if he could come up as well.
Congratulations. I'm glad you're here. I can show the presentation.
What I do is train the police on how to find stolen cars using the LoJack system. Back in 1992, when LoJack opened, there was here in Georgia, Henry County was one of the, well, actually, they were the first ones to get the LoJack tracking system in their patrol cars. We donated these trackers at no cost. We donated three of them. At that time, the county was smaller, and so we felt that that was enough to cover the stolen cars here in the county. Since then, they have got 14 tracking units in their patrol cars. And last year, we had a motorcycle that was stolen that had a LoJack in it. So when we sell a customer a LoJack, and we install it in a car, truck, piece of heavy equipment, or in this case, a motorcycle, motorcycle was stolen, and it sends out a silent signal to your police officers equipped with the LoJack tracking units. So they picked up the signal and tracked it with this one motorcycle with the LoJack in it. When they got there, they began the investigation, and the detectives were called out, and there was 18 motorcycles recovered, made two arrests, and there was also recovered parts. So what we'd like to do is recognize these two detectives, and we also, the Southeast Chapter of the International Association of Auto Theft Investigators will be having their annual conference in Orlando, Florida. They have won an award, which they will be presenting this award down there at this meeting, this conference. It's a week-long training seminar. During that time, they will be given this award. So what I'd like to do at this time is bring up the chief, and we're going to present these awards to these two detectives. Chief, again, we appreciate Henry County here having these trackers and the work that y'all have done, you know, as far as recovering stolen trucks, cars, in this case, a motorcycle, that are coming into Henry County. This also protects the citizens of Henry County if they have a LoJack in their car, where they would get it back. Using an average recovery time of two hours. So again, we have two detectives that have done an outstanding job in investigating this case and making several arrests. The first one, what I'd like to do is give these to the chief and let him recognize these two detectives.
Okay, the first one's for Detective Rick Franklin. He has since moved back in uniform patrol, that's why he's dressed the way he is today in uniform. Also, Mr. Burrus, I believe this case also went back down to Columbus, Georgia, where several other vehicles were stolen and recovered down in Columbus, Georgia, too. So the case emanated from here and went back down there. So Detective Franklin, if you'd come up.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Good job. Appreciate it.
The next individual's Detective Hardy. He's been primarily an auto theft detective for about the last five or six years. He's done an excellent job on this. He pretty much was the case agent throughout the whole case, and then he went down and worked with Columbus to help them recover those vehicles down there. So Detective Hardy, if you'd come up, please.
Again, this resulted in about $170,000 worth of recovery. Now, the parts that they were stripping off the bikes were stolen on eBay or Craigslist, and this was only a part of how they got rid of these motorcycles. So the biggest, when they steal a bike, is they will steal it, strip it for parts. And again, as you say, there was about $170,000 worth of parts that was recovered, and bikes, you know, just for the work that these two detectives did.
Thank you so much. We're certainly proud of all of our law enforcement officers here in Henry County, and this just is another example of the outstanding professionalism and dedication to the job, and a job well done. So hats off to both of these gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners opposing unionization and mandatory collective bargaining legislation pending in the United States Congress. And I would like to ask if our county attorney, Ms. Latonya Wiley, could make the presentation on this item.
Madam Chair, members of the board, there is presently pending in Congress legislation that will force local governments such as Henry County to enter into collective bargaining agreements with unions with respect to the terms, conditions, and privileges of employment of public safety employees. The current state of the law does not require counties to enter into such negotiated contracts. This proposed resolution before you is a statement of this body, if approved, that will oppose any such efforts on the part of Congress to enact this legislation. And namely, the basis for the refusal or the opposition to this particular legislation is more from the fact that county employees currently have due process protections already in place. They cannot be dismissed but for cause. Here in Henry County, y'all have taken the additional measures of adopting a civil service system that allows county employees who are classified employees to appeal any type of adverse action taken against them. They can appeal to the county manager, where they have a hearing, where they are allowed to be represented by counsel. When the county manager renders his decision, if they are still dissatisfied, the employee can then appeal to the Board of Commissioners. Ultimately, the employee can go on to court if they are dissatisfied with the Board of Commissioners' decision. So before you is a statement saying that there are adequate protections in place for county employees, and we believe that those protections protect our employees without the need for the proposed legislation.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Roark. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. The next item on the agenda, I will turn this over to Commissioner Holder, is a request by Luella Baptist Church to utilize a portion of county property. Mr. Holder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several years ago, as an intersection improvement at Luella Road and Highway 155, Henry County purchased the old Luella Junction barbecue stand, which would improve the sight distance once it was torn down. There was a remnant of property left on the west side of Luella, north side of Tressel, that went along with this piece of property, and this is property that the Luella Baptist Church is wanting to use, and it's contiguous to their church, to have a tent revival meeting on, from October the 15th through the 25th. The revival's not that long, but they wanted the use of the property for the 10-day period so that they could get it ready, and then, of course, the takedown and what have you. And I would ask that the board approve this, and that the attorney be willing and able to propel any document necessary for them to have access to this property for this period of time.
Any board member have a question or comment? Or if not, if that is your motion, Mr. Holder, I'll ask for a second. Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. The next item on the agenda, I will turn this over to Commissioner Holder, is a request by Luella Baptist Church to utilize a portion of county property. Mr. Holder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several years ago, as an intersection improvement at Luella Road and Highway 155, Henry County purchased the old Luella Junction barbecue stand, which would improve the sight distance once it was torn down. There was a remnant of property left on the west side of Luella, north side of Tressel, that went along with this piece of property, and this is property that the Luella Baptist Church is wanting to use, and it's contiguous to their church, to have a tent revival meeting from October the 15th through the 25th. The revival's not that long, but they wanted the use of the property for the 10-day period so that they could get it ready, and then, of course, the takedown and what have you. And I would ask that the board approve this, and that the attorney be willing and able to propel any document necessary for them to have access to this property for this period of time.
Any board member have a question or comment? All right, if not, if that is your motion, Mr. Holder, I'll ask for a second. Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. The next item on the agenda is going to be under our public comment. Mr. Jim White of 167 White Drive, Stockbridge, is here to speak to the board this morning on a thank you. We like those.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And first, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate you moving me up, but it wasn't necessary. The preacher tells me often that I'm supposed to give thanks to the Lord, and everything, give thanks, and it occurred to me over the weekend that perhaps we were remiss on the Henry County Development Authority for not to come and express to you thanks for your support for our efforts. In the most recent issue of the Atlanta Business Chronicle, there's a considerable discussion of the budget cuts that are affecting the State Economic Development Department and their ability to attract industry here. We appreciate the working relationship we have with the board and with all of your department heads, county manager. These things are vital. I think, as the chairman has said on numerous occasions, we have a pro-business reputation in Henry County, willingness to work to try to accomplish things. We realize that often the things we ask you to do put you through a lot of work, like getting us the opportunity for our citizens to consider the local TAD referendum for tax allocation districts, even giving a local enterprise the ability to seek to finance movie studios in Henry County has put you through a lot of, a lot of hard work. There are, our goal, our mission, and our objective is investment, development, and jobs. And it takes a lot of work of a lot of people to accomplish these things. Not every idea works out, but we do appreciate your hard work trying to see whether it is beneficial to Henry County and the citizens of Henry County to support these projects as they come along. It's occurred to me over the last couple of days that, having grown up on a farm, that the partnership between government and citizens has gone on for a long time. Most of us that have watched any Jimmy Stewart movies are familiar with the frontier people who went out and got 40 acres and a mule, generally from the government, in order to expand our frontier westward. And certainly, the railroads were given tremendous incentives to develop the economy by expanding railroad service from one coast to the other. We thank you for your support in the budget. We have an excellent staff. They're highly regarded throughout the state and the professional community, especially Bob White, who's celebrating 15 years with us, and is the chair-elect for the Georgia Economic Developers Association. We've recently returned to your administration building, and we appreciate the fine quarters and the cooperation of the staff also, in seeing that we could make a good first impression when we have people come to look at Henry County. On a personal note, I always try to thank Commissioner Matthews, I mean Basler, excuse me, for seeing that the road sides are maintained in my part of the county. It also helps us in making a good impression on people who come to our community, and just makes us feel better, I think, when the grass is cut. And also, just in my personal life, an aside, I came home one day, and my wife was very ill, and, you know, to be able to call 911 and be assured of professional service, we just take it for granted, and I want to thank you. And I hope we will continue to have a good and strong working relationship to accomplish what is most desperately needed, I think, in our economy today is jobs. Being in real estate, having family in real estate for years, having worked with builders and developers, these people are basically our business, and jobs is the only thing that will get our economy moving again. And again, thank you.
Jim, thank you so much. We appreciate you being here today. I don't know if our citizens really realize how much the Development Authority does for this county. I think, as you said, sometimes we take a lot of things for granted, and just, I think even before I was involved in government, my assumption was everybody knew Henry County was great, and they would want to relocate here as a business, and that's not true. It takes a lot of effort on the Development Authority's part. You're constantly going out, you're seeking opportunities to bring business here, very creative in the way that you do that, and even in the midst of this down economy, the fact that the Development Authority has brought viable jobs into this community says a lot about the experience of that board and Bob White, our Development Director, and hats off to you guys. It's a tough job, and Henry County's in the process of reinventing itself. We have relied very heavily on the building industry for many years to keep us afloat, and we have seen that that's probably not a good strategy in this economy, and we certainly need to be more diverse in the types of jobs and businesses that we have here in our community. And I know you've got a tough job, and we want to thank you, too, for your efforts and everything that you do for this county. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is going to be under courts. We have a resolution requesting approval of the Georgia Indigent Defense Services Agreement with the Flint Judicial Circuit Public Defender Office. Our presenter is Kelly Balcastro, Court Financial Administrator, and Gary Bowman, Flint Judicial Circuit Public Defender, Exhibit Number One. Good morning.
Good morning. This is just our annual, we do it every year, contract with the Flint Judicial Circuit Public Defender's Office. The state provides us with six employees, and we provide 13. The state pays them, and then we reimburse the state for that, and this is just our agreement. In the agreement this year, I did incorporate the four furlough days that all county employees are doing.
Do you face any budget cuts from the state for this particular?
For this group of people? The state, the six state pay, the last that I talked unofficially, they were thinking that they were probably going to have about four over the course of the year also.
Any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
I have one.
Mr. Holder.
Kelly, I see in the executive summary, what all of this adds up to is like a million and $38,000, a million dollars, we'll say. And then you're looking at the $500,000. Is the total cost to run the, give me what the total cost to run the Public Defender's Office is?
It's the million dollars plus the $500,000.
So 1.5 million.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's important for the people to know what it actually costs to run the Public Defender's Office in this county, and what, it's a necessary service. I'm not questioning that at all. I'm just saying, it's good to know what it costs for the court system and where our tax dollars go. And we say, well, yeah, the state's putting in half a million dollars. Where'd those tax dollars come from? Came from every one of us. So the point is, it costs someone a million and a half dollars for the indigent care or the Public Defender's Office in this county. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have a resolution before you, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Roark. Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. Moving on, under SPOS, we have a resolution requesting authorization to accept the historical jail to be located at the Heritage Park Village. Our presenter is Ron Burkhalter, SPOS Capital Projects Director, Exhibit Number Two. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Henry County started collecting structures for the historical village at Heritage Park about eight years ago, starting with the train depot and the coal-powered train engine. The jail that Henry County will purchase was the actual working jail on the square in McDonough in the 1800s. This addition will add significant value to the current village. The owner of the jail, Mr. Charles DeBerry, would like to exchange the historic jail for a portable storage building that costs $3,620. The relocation of the historic jail will be performed by Mr. Robbie McClinton in conjunction with the Henry County SPOS Department. Mr. McClinton has agreed to donate the total cost of moving the jail. Funding for this is available in the SPOS II Heritage Park account.
Any board member have a question or comment?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holder.
This is a comment and a question also, and I can understand Mr. McClinton willing to move the structure. Is he covered if he gets hurt or whatever, and moving it? Is the county liable since he's working with SPOS? These are some questions that I think need to be answered, and we need to not be held liable for some of these things, if in fact, that's what he's willing to do, and obviously he is. But sometimes something that looks free and not costly ends up, cannot be free and not costly.
And if we can insert a provision requiring a hold harmless clause to be executed by the movers, as we've done in other instances, to address that concern.
I would highly encourage that, because in moving a structure such as this, and also, if it falls all to pieces between there and here, I mean, then basically, we have nothing. And there just needs to be some provision so that we are held harmless as far as liability's concerned, but that also we get what we are bargaining for.
I'm thinking, the non-theorist resolved clause can be amended to say subject to the execution of a whole harmless agreement executed by the mover.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, is Mr. DeBerry in your question?
Okay. He's fine with all these terms, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, you have a resolution before you, the Henry County Board of Commissioners, for the purpose of accepting a historical jail to be used for display at the Heritage Park Village, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Item B has been tabled, so we're going to move on under public safety. A resolution requesting approval of a contract with the Georgia Forestry Commission for fiscal year 2011. Our presenter is Chief Bill Lacy of the Fire Department, Exhibit Number Four, and you're not Chief Lacy.
No.
Good morning, Chief Johnson. How are you?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This morning, I'm presenting the contract, the fiscal year 2011 contract with Georgia Forestry Commission. The Georgia legislators presented House Bill 1055, and the governor's signed it to legislation this year. This measure was approved to increase the forest land assessment from four cents to 10 cents per acre on privately-held forest lands throughout the state. This is the first time Georgia Forestry Commission's forest land assessment for wildlife protection has been adjusted since 1967. What this means to us, this is our forestry response to fires that require tractors, and require Georgia Forestry Commissions to help to mitigate these types of incidents in Henry County. So basically, it went from four cents an acre to 10 cents an acre.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
Madam Chair, I hate to ask all the questions this morning, but there are some questions that I have. The $8,500 that Henry County is being assessed, is that the entire acreage in Henry County? Oh, tell me what that, a question.
It's four, 85,720 acres. I'm not sure, it's just a privately-owned acreage in Henry County for the privately-owned.
And how will that be, will it be charged back to the individual home, landowner, or will it, how does that work?
I'm not sure.
Mike Sepp here with Georgia Forestry Commission. Can you make an answer to that for us? I do know we have been in this contract for, since, I think, 67, I think's the last time we updated. We just haven't been assessed as much.
I understand. Is this 8,500 part of the tax bill that's already part of the normal assessment that people receive, or is this an addition?
Is this an additional fee that we pay? The Fire Department has paid us, it was normally $4,000.
Right, four cents.
A year. And now, it's gone up to the 8,500. So this is something that they budget in their budget, and we budgeted the 4,000, this increase will be.
But it's not put on each individual parcel of property. This is, this is something that goes from the general fund that is filtered down to people.
Correct.
For a cost of protection. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, you have before you a resolution authorizing Henry County Fire Department to accept a contract with Georgia Forestry Commission, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Stamey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The next item is a resolution authorizing the purchase of raid vests for narcotics agents, and our presenter is Lieutenant Kevin Connor of the Police Department, Exhibit Number Five. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board.
This is a resolution requesting the authorization for the expenditure of asset forfeiture funds to be used to purchase raid vests to be used by narcotics agents for the police department. Law enforcement personnel routinely put themselves in danger every day and place themselves at a higher risk of being shot or stabbed than a normal citizen. It is of utmost importance that they are protected in every way possible. We're requesting to purchase 13 hardcore type 3A ballistic raid vests with ARA shock plates. They are greatly needed to replace current vests that have expired beyond their date of effective use. These vests can be purchased from Dana Safety Supply. These are the same type used by many federal agencies, as they are designed to be worn for an extended period of time inside a vehicle while maintaining comfort and security for the wearer. It also provides protection against most handgun threats, as well as protection against type 1 through 3A threats. Bids were solicited through the purchasing department. Two bids were received, and the lowest and most responsive bidder was Dana Safety Supply for a total bid amount of $9,750. The recommendation is to allow the use of funds from seized asset forfeiture account to pay for the expenses associated with the purchase of the hardcore type 3A ballistic raid vest with ARA shock plates, and award the bid to Dana Safety Supply as the lowest and most responsive bidder.
All right, Madam Clerk, on the resolution that we have before us, it shows the amount of $9,750, but we also need to add to Dana Safety Supply, didn't put the vendor's name in the resolution. Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
I have a question.
Mr. Stamey?
But tell you, you said that the, these vests are simply expired, correct? The ones that, these are replacements and expired vests, correct?
They're replacements for ones we have already, yes, sir.
What is the life expectancy of a vest?
Approximately five years.
Five years, so the material, everything's being updated, so this is probably giving you a more effective vest against the more high-powerful bullets and stuff, correct?
Yes, sir, it is. And also, these vests are specifically designed, they're lightweight, and the way the shoulder straps and the sides come around, they're specifically designed to be worn inside a vehicle for an extended period of time, whereas the vests that we have now are not quite so comfortable after you sit inside of a vehicle for a while.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
And this says, they retail for about 1,500 each, if my math is correct or written, for about half that?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Well, anytime a drug dealer can buy vests for our folks, I'm all for it.
Great.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have a resolution before you, awarding the bid to Dana Safety Supply in the amount of $9,750, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Stamey.
Say.
Second by Mr. Roark. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on under Planning and Zoning Services, this is a public hearing, a resolution adopting the Hudson Bridge-Jonesboro Road Activities Center Livable Centers Initiative Study. Our presenter is Breka Johnson, Planner Two, and that's Exhibit Number Six. Good morning.
Good morning, Board. Chairman Mathis, thank you for this opportunity to have our final, hopefully, adoption of the LCI study that staff and our consultant team with Tunnel-Swangler-Washington Associates has been working on since last June. The process started in February of last year, 2009. We received a $100,000 grant from the ARC to pursue a study that would take a look at the particular area at Hudson Bridge Road and then south to Jonesboro Road to see how we can make it a more walkable, livable, mixed-use development, or, I'm sorry, a plan, rather. The project area is approximately 1,300 acres, with about 70 acres of that located in the city of Stockbridge. 58% of the area is undeveloped, and over the course of the last year, we've had a number of meetings that included a lot of the core stakeholders within the area coming before you all for presentations in February of last, February of this year and March of this year, and also a series of design charrettes or design meetings we've had with the public. From that, we've come up with a plan that encompasses looking at the existing land uses, transportation, infrastructure, and marketing, and markets that we have in the area, and looking at how we can expound upon that for the future plan. This past Monday, we had a meeting with our core team meeting, because we are in the process to implement this plan. In addition to adopting it, we will implement it by having an updated code to the Activity Center Overlay Districts Code currently within the ULDC, but that will come before you at a later time. Currently, the ARC requires that we have a resolution to adopt the plan so that we can apply for future supplemental studies, more in particular to look at the West Side Parkway alignment for the new proposed road to connect Hudson Bridge to Jonesboro Road. We will be going before the city of Stockbridge next week for another resolution for adoption of the plan, and then at a later date will come before the zoning advisory board, Board of Commissioners, and also the city of Stockbridge to adopt the updated code and also to amend the future land use map and comprehensive plan. And lastly, we have received several resolutions of support from the Henry County Council for Quality Growth, the city of Stockbridge, and the ARC.
I have a couple of questions. How many public meetings have you had?
We've had a series of about eight, and that also includes the core team meetings that we've had as well. Probably had about three or four more additional core team meetings that was basically our steering committee that encompassed more of the core team stakeholders within the LCI corridor.
Have these been well attended by citizens?
Yes, ma'am. The last two meetings that we had with you was our draft plan presentation, our final plan presentation we had here before you all in February and in March of this year.
I think there's been some confusion, and that was one of the things I see that was noted in, in some of the paperwork here in our exhibit book, that there's some misunderstanding of what an LCI is and what it, you know, what it's intended to do. And I know recently, something has cropped up where there's been some commercial property cleared on Jonesboro Road, and some citizens think that 1,500 houses are being built there because there's proposed, 1,500 housing units proposed within 1,300 acres. They're assuming that land is cleared, and there's going to be 1,500 houses built there. And so I'm not sure how you go about getting the information out, but that's not accurate, that that's not what's going on on that piece of property, it just happens to be cleared, but it has nothing to do with 1,500 houses.
Right, and this study is just that, is a study. The only way that we can implement it is if future development comes to the property once the LCI study is adopted, and once we have a code in place to regulate what can go where on the, on the property. I guess if I need to refer to Michael Harris about, you know, the property that was cleared on Jodico Road, I guess.
Right, Chairman, that was done as part of, again, it was nothing to do with the LCI itself, but that was a private landowner who submitted the plans in for a proposed potential development in that area. While that particular area does lie within the LCI area, it should be noted that we've, they've been a part of the group, they've been part of the stakeholders committee throughout the course of the process, so any development would fall within this particular LCI. I think similar confusion you speak of, we've also started the master planning on a, on another area not far from this, this particular LCI area, and it's outside of those, those programs are outside of two separate LCI master planning studies. So this one, the clearing is being done, that's, it falls within this LCI, but again, they'd also be bound by these future guidelines that'd be established. And as, just to note, the typology or the proposed percentages that are being proposed within these different activity centers, they're just that, they're proposed. As we go through the master planning process, those details and those specifics are fleshed out during the master planning process, and that's one of the nice things about, great things about the process. It has citizen input, it has input from those who are, who live within that, within that activity center, and it gives them the opportunity to step forward and say, here's what we'd like to see in our community. So that's the message we're trying to get across. So this was the first one, and ideally, we'd like to continue this process as it is in line with our comprehensive plan to go through and do master planning throughout, in select areas throughout the county.
And any property owner along that, within the proposed 1,300 acres, if their land is currently RA, they would have to come before the zoning advisory board and the Board of Commissioners with a rezoning request before they're able to do anything with that property, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
The process does not change. If any, whatever the current land use is right now, if they want any land use beyond what they currently have, they have to come back before this board, as well as the zoning advisory board, and go through the same process for rezoning the property.
And it would have to be advertised, posted, same process?
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct.
And by the same, if it were RA, they can keep it as long as they want to live there, if they're not bound by whatever.
Right, that's a great, that's a great point.
Property owners still have their property rights.
Right, the plan itself does not rezone any property, does not change any land use. They'd have to go through that process. I think it's an important.
Yeah, that's good, because I think some people will see this because we're, may or may not have got this study and think that there's going to be bulldozers out there tomorrow.
Correct. Yeah, this is just.
And from that.
The study, as Breka has mentioned, it gives citizens and landowners and people in that area, and stakeholders, if you will, the opportunity to master plan their area. And again, this is a 2030 plan for the most part, so we're looking at 20, 10, 20 years, how we envision that area, or how the citizens envision their area, their community developing over time. So it gives them an opportunity to come forward, and like Breka mentioned, we had a good amount of support throughout the LCI process from the stakeholders and from other citizens in that area to come out and say, here's what we'd like to see, here's what we feel is appropriate in this area, and that same process will go forward in other, in other select areas throughout the county.
It's really amazing that you have that magnitude of property sitting right along I-75, and it has not been developed at this point. And it gives a unique opportunity to, to really take control of that growth and not end up with a lot of big-box retail sitting right on I-75 when there could certainly be a better use for that land than more big-box retail. Although, I'm sure you'll still have some of that, but certainly would like to see some more professional-type businesses to help support the hospital, if, you know.
And that's what we heard when we had, when we had the public hearings, that was what came out, and people would like to see. And it gives them an opportunity, rather than complain about what comes in after the fact, to come up front and say, to get ahead of it, get ahead of it and say, here's what we'd like to see in this area. You know, and there was a, there was a strong consensus as far as the type of development people wanted to see, more of the professional type of development people wanted to see. You know, so we're really encouraged by the process, that it went really well, and look forward to the subsequent processes going forward.
Any board member have a question or comment?
One comment.
Mr. Stamey?
Now, Breka, just to reiterate what Michael was saying, we're, by adopting this today, we're not forcing streetscape landscaping packages, building materials, we're not doing any of that to the entire area, correct?
Correct. This, the study is just an analysis of all of the public participation and the existing and what, what it could be in the future. The plan is just that, it's a plan. The only way that we can implement the plan is by adopting the amended code and amending the future land use map or the comprehensive plan.
And still, every, every individual landowner would still have to come back and file an application.
Yes, absolutely.
And agree to the conditions, correct?
Right. Essentially, the draft, the framework plan you have in your study, it gives you a list of what types of land uses are appropriate, and that essentially would take the place of what's currently on the future land use map. And so any property owner can come in and rezone their property, and they would go through the same process as we, as discussed earlier for rezoning.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holder?
Breka, has there been any constitutional challenge to this at this point?
Yes, we did receive a constitutional challenge from a property owner, because there was some concern about us adopting the code before the core team members were able to review it and, you know, say that they were okay with the changes and they were ready to support it. But we are only coming to you for the study, and I believe all of that's been cleared up with the property owners, that we will not be adopting the code today, but there will be full notice at that time, before that time, actually.
And according to the executive summary that we have here, that there's been no content changes since the meeting that came in, in March, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Kelly, let's reverse for a moment what Chairman Mathis said about the zoning of property, in that you would have to come for rezoning. I understand that completely, and I think everyone probably does, regardless of whether you lie within an overlay district or not. But let's reverse the role. What if you have zoned property currently? And if you look at the conditions in the LCI versus the conditions that this subject property was zoned under, I think it would be totally different as far as what would be required. Now, what would prevail? Would it be the conditions that it was zoned under originally, or would it be the conditions that came as a result of the adoption of an overlay? So I have concerns there, and we've had a constitutional, I guess, I'm assuming, one constitutional challenge.
We have.
It's hard to believe that that will be the only one, because we're talking about probably some of the most expensive land or property that lies within Henry County right along I-75. Now, this is not in my district, obviously. I do have concerns about it, because precedent that is set here certainly will go into any other overlay district or in any other area of the county where an overlay district is Do you have an answer about the zoning?
Yes. Essentially, if the property is currently zoned commercial, and if there are zoning conditions, the zoning conditions will remain with the property until the property is rezoned. So if there's property that's currently zoned C3, in order to meet the requirements of the code, if they want to have housing, they would have to rezone to mixed use, and.
But the point is, Breka, they have C3 zoning then, I think you just made a valid point. If the overlay district calls for that subject property to be residential, then does it stay commercial, or are they allowed to continue to develop it commercially, or is it going to be residential?
And the point that you're bringing is, we hear you loud and clear, currently, for the property owners that currently have underlying zoning, that will remain in place.
Is the conditions that they were zoned originally on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This plan that you all are adopting today is just the plan. What staff will have to do is come back to you all at a later date and amend the future land use map and adopt a overlay district for the properties that are within the LCI. Right now, because there are so many properties or a number of properties that are already currently zoned commercial, they could come in tomorrow, submit an application, or submit their plans to Development Plan Review and begin building. Even if you all adopt the plan today, that would not prohibit a property owner who currently has C3 zoning, R2 zoning, or any other underlying zoning from coming in and not coming back before you all. Once you all adopt the plan, amend the future land use map, and then adopt the overlay, then we move into another set of rules, because those property owners then at that time will be bound by the future land use map, new designations in that overlay district. So today, it will not change anybody. If you are a property owner and you lie within the LCI area and you want to come in and develop your property as it is currently zoned today, you have that right. The constitutional challenge that was presented was more in regards to open space and parks that we were proposing. One thing that the consultants came up with is that a lot of the private property owners would have to give land for open space, and staff went back and forth with them. And staff went back and forth with them, saying, no, I don't know how we can enforce that, because if you're saying that it's going to be open space, but it belongs to a private property owner, then we've taken their property and we're controlling it. So that has been amended in the code, where it will be at the choice of the developer or applicant if they want to donate open space. So I think that's been cleared up. But we still have had several meetings, and when we met with the core team on last week, there were still some outstanding issues that we didn't feel comfortable enough in bringing to you all to adopt, so.
How many landowners should we talk about in the whole district?
Essentially, about 20, just within the corridor.
And you got good participation from all of them?
Yes, we have, most, a majority of them.
Or at least the opportunity to participate?
Yes, opportunity has been there from the, from the start.
And they've all, obviously, they're all informed on what's happening?
Yes, sir.
And there have been no strenuous objections among those 20? Because those are the ones that ultimately, that it's going to affect one way or the other?
Absolutely. And I think we've had better participation from the larger track.
Well, sure, sure. If somebody just owns a house in there, or whatever, you know, they, obviously, they're concerned, but not been to the extent maybe the others are.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think they recognize the potential, too, because as this property exists today, there's not a lot that can be done with some of it until a parkway or roadway is constructed throughout the site. So I would think the majority of those property owners would be more than happy to work with the county, because it's going to make their property more valuable in the end, so. All right, any other questions or comments from board members? If not, you have a resolution, well, no, I got a call for public comment, because this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Let the record reflect that no one is here to speak on this item, and we have before us a resolution to adopt the Hudson Bridge-Jonesboro Road Connector Activity Center 2010 Livable Centers Initiative Study. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the great resolution, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Roark. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor?
All opposed.
Motion carries with Roark, Stamey, Mathis in favor, and Holder opposed. Thank you. Bob, could you and Jim come back up to the, the podium? Commissioner Holder said he needed to make a point. That should pique your curiosity.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We had a bond validation hearing this morning, otherwise I would have been here at 9:00.
Mr. White was here early and made some thank yous to the Board of Commissioners, and I want to reciprocate, and certainly since you're here, Bob, and, and Jim is back. Many times, and the comment's been made about people not realizing what role the Development Authority plays in the economic development of any county, and I think that's true in Henry County. People take for granted, or as Jim talked about, you take for granted and assume that when you pick up that phone, 911 is going to respond. I know that the Development Authority has had criticism here over the years because of Big Box Bob, and that's what I'm going to call you, is Big Box Bob.
That's a new one on you, but...
Because we want high-tech jobs, we want more white-collar jobs. And I think so many times, people forget the fact that development in any county, or any community, or any area, has to evolve. It has to start with what we have started. Why did it start that way? Because of the logistics of Henry County. And if I'm saying anything wrong, Bob, please correct me, and that's the reason I wanted you back up here. I just want to say thank you to the Development Authority. In these down times and down economy that we have, we many times say, well, we don't need all those little big warehouses, they're ISO, they store hazardous chemicals, they do many things that are non-desir, not desirable, but they are stable. Many of those people are still working, they have jobs. We've had some high-tech companies here that have come, and they have gone. And just to show you, if you go along the I, the 155 corridor, and you look at the amount of investment that you, your staff, have encouraged people to invest in Henry County, the Eagles Landing area, Hampton area, Georgia 3, those are just some of the major industrial parks in the area. But when we see the significant amount of investment that's been made in Henry County, and the taxes that are received from that investment, and we think about where we might have been had we not had that, I think we need to, again, say thank you to the Development Authority for the role that they played in getting these businesses to locate here. Thank you.
Thank you, if I may add, speaking for the chairman, and we're not related, and that's one of the things, just to, to make in the public, right, and, and very proud of my association with Mr. White, but we're not related. Just showed the last name and distinguished gray hair, or the lack of, in my case. But I appreciate very much your comments, Commissioner Holder, and to the board. We really do appreciate all that you do. These are challenging times. You have to make difficult decisions every day, and, in, in the best interest of Henry County. And some of the probably misunderstanding about the, the role of, of economic development and the various players, we're very proud of the role that Henry County has had in, in being a logistics hub, really, in Atlanta. Atlanta's one of the top five logistics centers in the country, because of our location, because of our access, and those other features. And we're very happy about that, and very pleased. Our industrial parks are some of the finest in the Atlanta area. They're all privately developed, there's no tax money to develop those parks, like you have to do in, in other parks in the state, that don't have private investment willing to step up. The decisions to be made, develop big box speculative buildings or other buildings, are made by the landowners, made by the developers in the project, based on their anticipation of return on investment. They're business people, they, they look to make sound judgments about the use of their money and their property, and, and something's going to have a suitable return on the investment for them. And they've done an outstanding job of providing us with the product that we're able to market, and to be able to put these companies in. But as I mentioned at the beginning, we had a bond validation this morning for one of our more recent industry locations, The Waffle Bakers, which is a manufacturing company. We do work with a wide range of companies, manufacturing, distribution, back office, and corporate offices, and will continue to do that. It's a very challenging time, but I think that most communities would be very pleased with the investment and the jobs that we have in Henry County. And I think that's something we need to perhaps take a look every once in a while, and, and just recognize the fact that these companies here have invested substantially more than $1 billion in Henry County, just in their real estate and their equipment. That doesn't count the thousands of jobs that they, they create, doesn't count the millions of dollars they pay in payrolls every year to employ our, our local citizens, or the inventory taxes and other things that go to the community. So we appreciate, we appreciate very, very much y'all supporting our Industry Appreciation Week, Manufacturing Appreciation Week, that we did just in the last couple of months. That's something that we want to do more frequently, is to say thank you to the companies that are here, so, thank you, Commissioner Holder.
I want to say thank you, and we do recognize your presence.
Let me, let me write, real quickly, seconding everything Commissioner Holder said, let me encourage folks who may be watching this, to go to hcd.org, and there's very a lot of information. The Development Authority has public meetings that everybody's invited to come to, and a lot of information on their website, including a list, you'd be surprised, the companies that you've never heard of, that are employing 300 and 400 people in your community. And there is a lengthy list on the Development Authority's website of those. I encourage folks who maybe aren't curious about, when they drive by some, what they think, well, here goes another warehouse, well, somebody, as he, as Mr. White said, is investing millions of dollars in that speculatively, and also, a lot of these places that we're not aware of may be employing a lot of our neighbors. And I would encourage folks to take a look at that, and be a little better informed about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Warren. And alongside Big Box Bob, you may remember that as soon as he was, had accepted the position, it appeared in the media that Bigfoot had been cited in, in Henry County. So I'm not sure which one he prefers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, under Public Works, the first item is a resolution requesting approval of a contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation for resurfacing 6.960 miles of various county roads. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, Exhibit Number 7. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, board members. This is a resolution to authorize the chairman to sign our annual LARQ contracts with GDOT. These contracts, although we're signing them now, will actually for roads that will be done next year. So in this resolution, we're asking the chairman to sign a contract with GDOT that provides up to $259,247.22 of reimbursement for plants, plant-mixed asphalt for resurfacing of various roads. In this, I have included a, just as your information, a chart there that shows what GDOT will be paying us, and how much that material will cost. And as you can see, there's a few dollars difference, so Henry County will be supplementing that for those roads that are listed. There'll be two of these contracts, the next item is, is the same. Reason we have two of these contracts, we have two GDOT districts, District 3 and District 11. So this one is for 6.96 miles, and I'll be happy to answer any, any questions that you may have.
Steve, one have a question pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution authorizing me to sign a contract for S-012485-LAR with GDOT for the 6.960 miles of plant-mixed resurface, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Stamey?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark. All in favor? Motion carries for zero. And as Terry said, the next item, too, is the same, just with the different district. Are there any questions pertaining to the next exhibit?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Stamey to approve that contract. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Roark. All in favor? Motion carries for zero.
Madam Chair, I might make a comment, and I'm proud to see this. If you'll look at the maps, and see where GDOT is putting their money for the next year, I will make no other comment. Look at the map.
Would it be north of McDonough?
Very much. In fact, Districts 1, 2, and 3 are getting zero as far as state reimbursement for next year. Is that correct, Mr. McMichael?
On this contract...
On those two contracts, the two that we just talked about?
I was looking, after we spoke earlier, and on the prior contract, there is some on Mount Bethel.
Prior? No, I'm talking about the two we've just talked about.
Well, this, on the 6.96, I have Upper Woolsey, which is 52, Mount Bethel, Mount Bethel, and Bryan's Drive, so. Mount Bethel, I believe, is kind of southeast of McDonough.
Oh, it's no doubt, it's, it's in District 1, and I stand to be corrected, but the, I missed it in the map, because most of them that I saw were, but it, only two districts was 4 and 5, which is fine, I'll take money anywhere we can get it in Henry County, period. Reimbursement, okay?
All right, the next item is going to be a resolution requesting approval of an agreement for professional engineering services for the design of McDonough Parkway, that's going to be Exhibit Number 9.
This resolution will approve professional services for the design of McDonough Parkway from where it currently ends, just east of 42, near the school, and it will extend all the way to 155, cross 155 to a tie-in point on Turner Church Road. This resolution is just for the engineering of this road. It would be, right now, there's not any, enough funding for the construction, so this is to go ahead and get the design process started, some right-of-way, there's some right-of-way in there that we need to protect. And also, once we get this design process started, we'll be trying to solicit some federal or state funds, or state aid contracts, or whatever we can get. But if we have this process started, it will help us in that search for funds.
Ms. County Attorney, did you receive the agreement and bid sheet that you requested for review?
I reviewed the contract, I've not seen the scoring sheet, but I did review the contract, and the contract was fine.
Okay, did you need to see the bid sheet before we move forward with this item?
No, that wasn't necessary, I want it available for commissioners to take a look at. But if you all are okay with relying upon staff's judgment, which I am in this instance, I think we can go ahead and move forward.
Any other questions or comments pertaining to this item?
Look, Chair, how long is this section of road, Terry?
I believe it's about 3,500 feet from where the end of pavement, where it ends right now, to 155, and then from 155, from where we tie into Turner Church, is probably 1,000 feet, so all total maybe 4,500 feet long. Maybe close to a mile.
It just, and, and there's probably a reason, but almost $400,000 to design a 4,500-foot, less than a mile of road?
Well, just, let me, let me, I won't go into a lot of detail, but there is a lot involved in this road. Where 150, where we cross 155, it's right there at that crest hill.
I understand.
The site distance in there is questionable at best. We, we did a, the reason we did an RFP for this one is, we looked at three or four different types of intersections to accomplish this project. And instead of doing a conventional at-grade, if you will, crossing where the two roads meet at the same grade and signalize it, if we did that, we would probably, GDOT would probably make us cut down that hill, relocate 155, just a tremendous amount of work. What this design here is, is planning to do is, we'll actually put a bridge over 155, and then do like a ramp road back to 155. So it'd involve a bridge design as well, some additional roads to tie it in. The mitigation, you know, we, we parallel in a creek right there as we cross 155, there's a wetland on the north side of the road, so we have some environmental conditions in this, and we have a bridge, then we're going through GDOT as well, so.
No, this is just a sign, it has nothing to do with mitigation expenses or anything of that nature, is that correct?
It will cover the environmental, not the mitigation, that's correct. If we have to buy any wetland credits, or string bank credits, or anything like that, it will not include that. But will include the studies, and all those permitting, preparation of those permits, and all of that, delineation, that type stuff. But no, sir, it will not, it is just design.
What did the, what did the bids look like for the other vendors that submitted?
This was not a bid process. What we did on this process, this was a proposal for qualifications. We put out a proposal that said, here's the location, y'all tell us what you think would be the correct way to design this project. So the, the consultants prepared, designed, or kind of a concept-type thing of what they thought they would do for this fix. It was me, Rocky, and David reviewed all of those, and selected the one that we thought would work best. After we done that, then, once you select a design that you're going to use, then the consultant prepared a cost estimate for it. His original cost estimate, I think, was considerably over $400,000. It was after a lot of negotiation of what needed to be included, what didn't. So we went line by line of all the items in the design, and so this was negotiated from that, which is kind of that process when you do request for proposals. So it was not a hard bid.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have a resolution before you entering into an agreement with Kimley-Horn and Associates in the amount of $390,000 for professional engineering services for the design of the McDonough Parkway, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark, all in favor? Motion carries for zero. The next item is a resolution designating and reallocating funds for the Higgins Road paving project, and that's going to be Exhibit Number 10.
This road has been on our radar screen, I guess is a good way to put it, for a while. We have done some preliminary design work. Where we're currently at, of course, was trying to solicit or get the funding for this project. Where we're currently at, of course, was trying to solicit or get the funding for this project. We have done a cost estimate and found that we think that we would need approximately $280,000 to pay this road, which is, I believe, about a mile and a half, if my memory is correct. We, this, this cost of this is 280,000. This is with our county crews doing the grading and the paving. And we would use some, kind of some materials that we have on hand, the asphalt that's on the yard, we'd re-crush it, use it as a base, and then, of course, do all the grading and paving with our forces. So, the funding can be accomplished by reallocating $157,836 from the Peekskill Road project that has been completed and has additional monies left on that project can be moved over, and also $122,000 from Woodstown, which would give us our 280,000 that we feel like will cover our expenses for the survey, materials, all of our out-of-pocket costs.
Are there any questions or comments pertaining to this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this south of McDonough?
It's actually south of Locust Grove, a little bit.
I see.
It is, and you see where the funding's coming from, too. Very much south of McDonough. Yeah, I do like, I do want to make some comments, but this is a road that has, as Terry said, has been on the radar screen for some time, and there's been no funding for it. And why has there not been any funding for it? It's because it's a dead-end road. We tried to make it connect back to Locust Road, and the property owners were not willing. And had it been a connecting road, then the priorities and the ratings could have gone up and got it higher up many years ago because of the numbers of houses on it. Anytime you move funds or do anything with funds, you're going to get criticism. And I, you know, and I know I'm going to get it from Peekskill and also from the Woodstown people, and that's, I expect that. One of the reasons is, on Woodstown, that's not enough to do it, and neither is Peekskill. And I want to address the Peekskill first. These are general fund dollars. And Mike, if I'm wrong, you correct me, because we cannot take sploshed funds and put on a non-designated project. And Higgins Road was not a designated sploshed project. In a recent article in the paper, we, the Water Authority has mentioned the fact of how much the traffic has increased along Peekskill Road due to the boat ramps and the fishing, and the people along those roads realize it, too, because they're getting dusted out. It's terrible. And we're trying to do something to accommodate a portion of that road, and, again, down economy has prevented it from happening. That road would have been paved by a developer with private funds, the section from New Hope back to Old Jackson. Hopefully, that will occur. I can't tell you when. But I'm certainly willing to defend moving these funds to make this happen on Higgins Road, and I'm sure there will be some that are totally not pleased with the fact of us doing that. However, the $157,000, $157,000 from Peekskill is not enough to complete the project or even to basically design the project based on what we just saw for design. The section is in question. And certainly, I'm willing to support it. I wanted to give some reasons why, and if you were looking for a motion, I'm willing to approve the resolution to that respect.
Can we have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. And the final item under Public Works is a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase a precast box culvert for the Fairview Road project. That's exhibit number 11.
As y'all know, we have been working on a replacement pipe project at Fairview Road. It was brought the resolution, and that project was funded. Two pipes were bad on Fairview Road. We have designed it, kind of looked extensively about the best way to do that. We have come up with the precast concrete being the best alternative as far as the conduits under the road. Put that out to bid. We got two responses, and we recommend award to Old Castle Precast in the amount of $78,459.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? I believe this is a District 5 project, and since that commissioner is not here today, I'll entertain a motion from another board member.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the May 4 regular meeting and the May 6 call meeting. And I'd like to move those, I would like to move the approval of those minutes to after we come back from executive session, because I need to get with the clerk. There are a couple of changes that needed to be made to those minutes before we approve them, and I can talk to each one of the commissioners individually before we come back. At this time, I'd like to ask the county manager if he has comments for public session.
Yes, I do. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. Two items that I would term very good news. The first is a personnel matter that I would just like to make a public announcement, that I am appointing Keith Nichols as our permanent police chief here in Henry County. Keith has come through a project, a process that began about four and a half months ago, where we interviewed five very capable candidates for interim police chief. Keith was awarded that position, and in the last quarter of a year or four months, he has exceeded my expectations, whether you can go across the board in the police department, whether it's CID, patrol, crimes against children. He has made very good cases, he and his staff have. He's provided great leadership, and I think he'll make a wonderful police chief here in Henry County. The second item that I would like to address is the recently completed Georgia Independence Day Festival over at Nash Farm on July 3 and July 4. We had a very successful partnership with a major sponsor, SBN, and the festival was a great success. We had approximately 3,500 people in attendance on Saturday, double that on Sunday, and the preliminary numbers right now look like we have collected, the funding will be, so the funds will be somewhere between $36,000 and $37,000. So, that would mean that the festival was about $11,000 or $12,000 in the black, and we would split that with Mr. Peterson this year. I think he's very, very happy, will most likely come back and propose that he takes care of it all next year. So, two pieces of good news I just wanted to report to y'all.
Well, from my standpoint, I'm sure the other commissioners are in agreement. I think you made an excellent choice with Keith Nichols. He's an outstanding individual, and he will serve Henry County well in that position as police chief. And also, wanted to comment on Tim Coley and his staff. I was there both days during the event out at Nash Farm, and they did an excellent job. We had a huge crowd, and when you have that many people and a lot of things going on, the staff was running around and emptying trash cans and helping people find their lost children, believe it or not. We had several of those. And just making sure that the festival ran well. And also, hats off to the police department both evenings. That was a huge traffic control that they had to do for that event, and they moved the participants in and out of that facility very quickly, and everyone just did a fantastic job. So, I just wanted to make sure that I mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. County Attorney, any comments for public session?
No, ma'am.
The upcoming meetings and events will be Monday, July 19 at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, July 20 at 6:30 p.m. These are both regular board meetings. Monday, August 2 at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, August 3 at 9:00 a.m. are both board meetings. And at this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for pending and potential litigation personnel and land acquisition matters.
So, move.
We have a motion by Mr. Stamey?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. I need a motion to approve an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
So, move.
Got a motion by Mr. Stamey?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. At this time, we need to approve the May 4 and May 6 meeting, and does anyone have any corrections or additions to those minutes, other than the ones we talked about?
We do have those recorded.
We do. We do. And if not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the corrected version.
Okay, motion by Mr. Stamey to approve. Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries 301, with Commissioner Roark abstaining since he was not on the board at that time. If there's no further business to come before this board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Motion by Mr. Roark?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. We stand adjourned.